Clerk Segrist could call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek, not here. Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one set of minutes to be approved. Could call for a motion to approve the minutes of July 24, 2018.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes from July 24, 2018.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good, thank you. Now would be the time in our agenda for non-agenda item comments from the public. If there are any citizens who would like to make comments regarding any items that are not on the agenda this evening, now would be the time. If you'd like to talk about something that is on the agenda, please raise your hand while that item is being considered. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? Mr. Green, please.
Good evening, and thank you for a few minutes of your time. I'm here tonight because I have a concern. My concern as a resident of Canton is the conditions of Canton and where we're headed. We've done a lot of good things. We've grown a lot over the years. My wife and I have been here since 1989, and we built our house in 99, and we have seen a bit of decline in conditions, aesthetics, whatnot, that is kind of disturbing because I know that we're not a slump, but slums begin a little bit at a time, and I want to try to curtail the downward trend in terms of people keeping their homes and properties up. I don't know if this is as isolated as it may seem. I've talked to other people. They seem to, in other neighborhoods, and they have seen the same thing. Social media has kind of borne this out, that people seem to have less standards, what I call two sets of standards, low and no, that have come into the township. There's things like this that you'll see. And again, this is what I've observed. If somebody else has observed it. Weed nurseries, I think you know what I mean, weeds and crabgrass just full in lawns, cracked concrete sidewalks and driveways, early trash put out at curbs even though it's a violation of the ordinance, recycle bins in front of houses and not hidden, late removal of trash in recycled containers, junk stored at sides of houses, litter on lawns and driveways, dead trees not removed for years, tree stumps left to rot instead of removal, cars in disrepair left in driveways and on the streets, exterior woodwork in need of paint and replacing rotted boards, and there's other things that you could even nitpick even further. The bottom line is that there's probably many reasons for this. We've had a changing economy in the last 10 to 15 years. We've had more transient population partially because of that. We've got more properties that have become rental units. I know that the board has dealt with the rental unit situation, and hopefully that's going well. But I'm more concerned with the differing standards of new residents that come in. And the only entity really that can kind of get a handle on some of these issues are HOAs. Homeowners' associations are designed to basically take some of the onus off the township and kind of self-govern neighborhoods by following bylaws and being able to kind of get people in gear in terms of standards. But I think that that's not happening because I think homeowners have become a little bit weakened. I don't know why. I think some homeowners' associations have had trouble getting board members. I know my subdivision has had to, they don't have, we don't have elections anymore. We all have, we have appointments, which is really not even in the bylaws. I mean, it's like a makeshift type of thing because not as much interest to govern or to run the homeowners' associations. And the ones that do step up, they want to just, I guess, go to a meeting once a month. And there's more to it than that. But the township used to promote the homeowners' associations differently. And I'll tell you how that used to be. We used to have a neighborhood coordinator. This was back when Supervisor Tom Yak was here. Neighborhood coordinator back then, it was more of a passive position. It was there as a resource for homeowners' associations to get information or to get a connection to a township department, et cetera, et cetera. There was a connection to the different departments, advice and references. Promoted county road cleanup groups. If you notice, a lot of the county road cleanups, you have a little sign there. There was an initiative back there with the coordinator. And one local businessman, Bob Boyer, they worked really hard to make sure that all of those had groups that were going to be responsible for those roads and stuff. And that was part of being in Canton. I'm not sure that that is being fulfilled. I do one myself. I do two, actually. I organize two because I believe it's very, very important. We used to have a neighborhood know-how program. This went back probably like 25 years, where twice a year, there was a meeting of different entities that would be important to homeowners' associations. And they could come and ask questions. They could kind of network and compare notes, you know, in terms of, you know, what's being done in this neighborhood, that neighborhood, so on and so forth. I don't think we've done that in recent years. I think Phil LaJoy was the creator of that.
Did one last year.
I'm sorry?
We did one last fall.
Oh, he did one last fall? Okay.
And then Amy is in the process of putting together another.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected then. But I think it was done twice a year at one point. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I think those are kind of resources that lend to legal advice and sharing concerns with the different boards, public safety concerns. I know we have a public safety liaison. Patty Assling does an excellent job. But I think that the neighborhood coordinator did something more for the community than, you know, public safety is one thing, but the conditions and kind of like, well, it's not we versus they in terms of like us versus the township kind of thing. It's like we're all in this together. And I think a neighborhood coordinator is an excellent thing to have, excellent position to have, to bring us forward again. This person, I would hope that you would consider doing this because this person could be very proactive in kind of like moving the neighborhoods back in an upward trend and creating an environment, helping to create an environment where there's community. We used to do a thing called Christmas in Action that where the needy, the elderly, used to get repairs and liard work and stuff done on their homes. We stopped doing that a couple of years ago. I would like to see, you know, something done, a charitable event like that. And that would be something that a neighborhood coordinator could put together as well. Opportunity for volunteers, spirit building like that, I think is very necessary as we go forward. I guess what I'm getting at is that we, we're a, pick up ourselves by the bootstraps. I think it was shown in this last election with the ballot proposal. I heard a lot of negativity about the extra taxing, but yet it got approved. So that shows that we want to take care of ourselves, and I think we need to start doing that. So I would appeal to the board to, at some time, review the idea of helping neighborhoods, helping the associations in a very proactive way, not just being there. Township's always been there, but actually proactively getting with the homeowners' associations and helping them govern their neighborhoods, thereby creating less of a drain on township resources. I'm sure ordinance has probably got more than their plate full. I know my wife and I are constantly contacting the one that's in our quadrant, and I'm sure it's going on all over. So, yes, I, okay. That's all I have to say. I would like the board to consider that for maybe a future agenda item or study session as to what you can do to help the neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Greg. Is there any additional public comment? Please, now would be the time.
Hi, my name is Trevor. I live around Palmer and Lots. And usually during Ramadan, it is kind of a dangerous intersection. It's not very well lit, not really lit at all. And there are a lot of folks that, you know, are in my neighborhood that go to that mosque. And as people are crossing streets, it's sometimes people are very hard to see. And people are even kind of holding their phone up with the flashlight on their phone to kind of be a little bit more visible. There was even a story in the Free Press, I think it was today even, talking about how there are so many SUV deaths and extra injuries that happen, particularly in Michigan because SUVs are very popular. I feel like the situation there could be pretty dangerous. That's kind of brewing there with regards to traffic, the traffic flow, and the amount that the intersection gets used. I think that's something that we should definitely look at.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Okay. We have with us this evening Suzanne Reel, who's from Western Township's Utility Authority. I'm going to do, this is, that Suzanne talk has an extension of public comment. You're going to share with us briefly?
Our budget for next fiscal year. I'm just presenting our budget.
Which is an item in our consent calendar this evening.
Correct.
This is, I kind of see Suzanne as an extension of public comment. Then we pay the bills, then we'll come back to consent calendar. Yep? So, yeah, please go ahead.
The Finance Committee and our board has already reviewed and approved it. There were only a couple of things I really wanted to point out. First off, our budget is down from our current fiscal year, so that's great news, mainly due to the savings from exiting the Wayne County Detroit Water and Sewage Department. Also, last year when I set our budget, we did not have Ypsilanti's rates yet. I did receive the rate file for next fiscal year already. The increase is about 1.7%. Last year I budgeted 10% just to be safe because I didn't know where the rates were going to fall in. But that definitely contributed to it being down from last year. We have two bond issues, 2009 and 2012 bonds. The 2009, the last principal payment on those is in January, so that will be falling off, and that's reflected in the budget as well. Unless you guys have any questions, there isn't really anything else that I need to touch on.
I appreciate that because all the information you shared is in the packet this evening. Does the board have any questions for Suzanne? Please, Stephen, go ahead.
You mentioned Ypsilanti. So just remind us, is this the first onboarding of using Ypsilanti for the sewage?
No, we've, in past years, we were using both Detroit and Ypsilanti. Last July, we officially ceased sending flow to the Wayne County system. And everything's been going to Ypsilanti since then. When I set our budget for the current fiscal year, we were anticipating sending all flow there. I just didn't know what their rates were going to come in at. So I'm a little bit more accurate this time.
Great, thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Suzanne. Is there any additional public comments? Seeing none. Treasurer Slavens, could we pay the bills?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I make the motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor, the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now moving on to the consent calendar, which Clerk Segrist, one more.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. An appointment at the Historic District Commission of, oh, Scott Butner. The, item C2, the WATUW, or W, Western Township Utility Authority Annual Budget Approval. Item C3, Consider Acceptance of the Final Recycling Infrastructure Grant Report and Authorize Municipal Service Director to Submit the Report to the State of Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. And finally, item C4, Consider Second Reading of Addition of Chapter 2, Article 5 to Canton Township Code of Ordinance, entitled Code of Ethics, Sections 2-225 through 2-22, I'm sorry, 251.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to the general calendar. Thank you, Suzanne. First item. Consider Award of Professional Design and Construction Engineering Services to Northwest Consultants, Inc. for the 2018 Water Main Replacement Projects.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract for professional design and construction engineering services for the 2018 Water Main Improvement Project to Northwest Consultants Incorporated in the amount of $76,270 plus a contingency of $10,000 for a total of $86,270.
Support.
On April 12, 2016, the board awarded professional design and construction engineering services to NCI for the recently completed water main capital improvement projects. These included water main replacements in Hampton Court subdivision and Michigan Avenue, west of Beck Road. While performing these services, NCI was able to complete the design, obtain permitting from MDEQ for similar water main replacement on the Franciscan Court, East and West, and Princeton Street. Engineering Services would like to commence with the bidding for the water main replacement on these streets. Engineering Services requesting the board approval of contract with NCI to prepare the plans for bidding, obtain permitting from Wayne County, and hold a pre-bid meeting to evaluate the bidders. Design will also include abandoning a small portion of the water main on Cornell Street after the contractor is selected. NCI would be asked to handle all the construction and engineering inspection as well. Is there, are there any board questions or comments for Director Foss? Okay. Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Consider Approval of Purchase Order Contract with OHM Advisors and Approval of Budget Amendment for Construction Engineering Inspection Services for the Warren Road Pressure Reducing Valve. And we only have one motion on that first item, correct?
Correct. This will be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase the expenditures to the capital outlay work-in-progress account of $71,000 and a decrease expenditure in the transferred fund balance account for $71,000.
In order to better control water pressure variations within the drinking water distribution center, system, a detailed water analysis was recently completed by OHM Advisors. The study verified construction of pressure-reducing valve along Warren, West of Bridge would help maintain system pressures for our customers. The proposed valve will be located in the northwest quadrant of the township and help control pressures through that section. Additionally, the new valve will integrate automatically via SCADA with our overall water distribution system. A future board request will also recommend a new purchase order with LCR Construction, whom built the water storage facility for this new pressure-reducing valve project, provided at a reasonable cost, which can be negotiated in the future as well. Any board questions for Director Foss? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Motion carries. Second motion.
Supervisor, I further move to approve a purchase order contract to OHM Advisors for an amount not to exceed $71,000 for the construction, engineering, and inspection of the proposed Warren Road Pressure Reducing Valve.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item G3, Consider Approval Contract Extension with Skirbeck Entertainment Group for the Canton Liberty Fest.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the agreement for carnival services to be provided by the Skirbeck Entertainment Group, PO Box 1070 Fenville, Michigan, 49408, for a five-year extension to the existing agreement.
In summary, Canton's annual Liberty Festival continues to grow and thrive, demonstrating market success since the addition of carnival rides back in 2007. Leisure Services has worked with Skirbeck Entertainment Group as the sole carnival provider in each of the years with the exception of 2010, when another company was awarded with a one-year contract. In 2011, the five-year contract was awarded to Skirbeck due to a very lucrative financial package provided to Canton Township, which included a $10,000 signing bonus and an unprecedented commission in the industry upon conclusion of the contract. An additional five-year contract was awarded to begin in 2016. The terms of the current contract once again include a $10,000 signing bonus, 30% of all wristband ticket sales, $8,000 payment for games and concessions, as well as provide for additional entertainment, serving as a cost savings to Canton Township. The contract includes an opt-out option for Canton Township at any time during the terms of the contract with no penalty. At the conclusion of this year's Liberty Fest, Skirbeck Entertainment submitted a request for a five-year contract extension to the current agreement. This extension will enable Skirbeck to continue to invest in new, larger rides to enhance the carnival experience. Skirbeck is requesting to extend the term of the agreement through 2025 with two modifications. First, Skirbeck is offering to increase the payment for the games from $8,000 to $10,000 annually. Second, Skirbeck is offering an add-on, one-time, $15,000 contribution to be used for capital improvements in Heritage Park in addition to their $10,000 signature bonus. And the only other thing I might add that's not here in the summary is the other outfit that we did have for the one-year period, there were quality concerns, which kind of drove us to go out and rebid and take a look at again. And this year, there's only one event that I am aware of that popped up on social media. And the owners of Skirbeck actually were aware of what was happening on social media and reached out to the citizen, the residents at the time directly without, before Canton Township even made them aware, the problem was resolved, which was just amazing this day and age. So are there any additional questions or comments for Director Holenberger? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And do we have a second here, or is this a one?
That's it.
Consider Approval of Gravel Road Base Installation at Patriot Park.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the installation of gravel road base at Patriot Park by Hutch Paving at 300 East Ten Mile Road, Warren, Michigan, 48091, in the amount not to exceed $29,947 to be paid from the account number listed, Capital Outlet Land Improvements.
On May 9, 2016, the board approved an intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for park improvement to Patriot Park in the amount of $112,377. Many of the improvements, including engineering, earthwork, turf establishment, irrigation, well testing, have been completed to date. The remaining balance is $29,947. On June 12, 2018, Hutch was awarded the contract for the 2018 parking lot paving program in an amount not to exceed $785,582.33. This project is currently in progress. Project includes removal of disposal parking lot asphalt surface, stone subbase. After disposal, the asphalt pavement contracts has agreed to deliver the stone subbase material to Patriot Park at no additional cost. Since the material is being moved to the park property and Hutch Pavement has the equipment on site, there will be a savings to have the contractor place the stone subbase material in the future location, the parking lot at Patriot Park. Therefore, Leisure Service staff has negotiated a proposal with the contractor to not only deliver the stone on site, but also place stone in the location of the future park road. This material will allow for temporary access to the site until permanent road construction is complete. And Director Holenberger has put up a visual for us to what the puzzle is where we're headed.
That's correct. The entrance drive is currently in place. As you see, the Director Foss is kindly directing the cursor over. The parking lot is also currently in place, all with gravel at this point. The red section is currently not in place, and that is the section that will be constructed here so that we would be able to, once this is completed, we'll be able to start opening the gates and allowing people to access Patriot Park, park in the parking lot, and utilize the trail system that's throughout the park right now. So it's, it'll still be a work in progress and continual work as we work with developers on any sections of the park that we can get finished, utilizing different partnerships. But this will allow residents to access the park and have a place to park as they're going and walking their dogs or enjoying the nature trails that are out there.
Yes, Steve.
Were those existing trails when we acquired it, or did we create those trails?
Some of the trails were existing just from natural people walking through the area. There was neighbors that were mowing different trails for their own personal use through the area. But now our staff is maintaining a network throughout there. We also have the trail system that's just south of the drive entrance that goes all the way through the property to the Polte subdivision. They installed the water main along that, and that gravel trail there is from that partnership with Polte.
That's along Ford Road, or it's in?
It traverses there, as you see, going all the way through the park.
Okay. Is it bike-rideable or just walkable?
Yes. It's basically the same as the Lower Rouge Trail.
Fantastic.
So that's the only groomed portion of any trails other than just natural mowed areas that we're just kind of putting in there for people to use.
See no further comment. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item G5. Consider Approval Emergency Cart Path Replacement and Budget Amendment.
This will be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment as follows. Increase expense to the capital outlay land improvement account for $79,505 and a decrease expenditure to the transferred fund balance of $79,505.
Support.
Rather than reading the summary here, we were out there, toured the property last week. It's a mess. It needs to get fixed. Sooner the better. We had recently a cart end up in the pond.
Yes, just last week?
A little maintenance that we pushed off that we can't push off any longer, guys. That's my humble opinion, and that's why we're here presenting.
That was laid 25 years ago. It said in the backup there.
Yes.
Yes.
And the original intent was to do some temporary patching to get us through until we have a larger paving program out there. The temporary patching was going to be done with our contractor that we awarded maintenance to earlier this year that's been doing work throughout our parking lots and drives. We brought them out there to do some work, and they looked at it and said, "We can't help you. You need to replace that."
Anne Marie did send a note in with some questions. I think Greg did a pretty good job of responding to her concerns, which I think the whole board saw. So no additional questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the removal and replacement of the deteriorated golf cart path on Phyllows Creek Golf Club by Hutch Paving, 300 East Ten Mile Road, Warren, Michigan, 48091, in the amount not to exceed $79,505 to be paid from the account number listed for Capital Outlet Land Improvements.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
That concludes our formal agenda for this evening. Are there any additional public comments? Any additional public comments? Staff, anything, any comments, closing remarks? Greg, do we have an event? We talked about something, and I'm sorry for catching you off guard. An event coming up really soon, and, you know, my bad.
The summit shutdown is obviously a major, a major piece.
So we have enough time to telegraph. When does that process begin? That's what we're talking about.
Annual maintenance shutdown begins just after Labor Day. So that'll be shut down for four days. But prior to that, the gym will be shut down early to begin replacing the wood flooring and there resurfacing the wood flooring so that it will open when the summit opens after shutdown. The Club 55 Senior Center will have a renovation beginning at the start of shutdown. The demolition will be done during. at the start of shutdown. The demolition will be done during shutdown, but the reconstruction will be done. The senior center will still be accessible. However, portions of it will be blocked off for several weeks after shutdown as we finish a little renovation for a kitchenette area in the senior center.
Can expect a lot of dust to the fall season at the summit.
Yes. Lots of exciting projects.
Any additional board comments?
I would just, if I may?
Please.
Seven days ago, we had our primary election, and in that election, we had record turnout in Canton Township for a primary. Thirty-seven percent of the registered voters decided to come out and cast a ballot. We had 8,900 absentee ballots, which was a substantial amount. So you can all applaud yourselves for showing up and letting your voices be heard. We appreciate that. It was also the first, the first election since we had done a precinct realignment, and a number of people had seen their voting location change. So to see record turnout and to see people making their way to the proper location was also encouraging. For some of you who didn't vote this primary, pay attention in November, because those locations are going to be staying the same. But thank you all.
Well done getting through that event, and your staff as well. Okay. Summer, go ahead.
One quick thing. I haven't had a chance to do this publicly, but I wanted to thank the Public Safety Department. My son participated in the Youth Public Safety Academy. He enjoyed the entire week. He was a little apprehensive and was nervous going in, but he said it was a great week. He learned a lot. He said he ate a lot, which I appreciate. But I think it's a great program. He talks about Officer Patty all the time. And so I think it's a great program, and I want to thank you for doing it.
For motion to close.
So move.
Aye.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening.